I can hear.
Morning. So, I wanted to bring up something about AWC. It looks like Hannah says we lost the connection. All right, we're back. So, I heard we lost our connection, but we're back. So, yeah, I wanted to bring up one matter that we're gonna vote on Monday, but I wanted to get in people's minds. So, Councilmember Mom has been our City of Spokane representative to Association of Washington Cities, but she is now being elevated to a higher position and thus will vacate her position for District Nine. Congratulations, Candace. And so, we have to fill that with the city council member. The other council members that have been most involved in the AWC have been myself and Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Burke is obviously her term is gonna be ending, and I'm on the legislative and other things. The person who's been next most involved has been Councilmember Wilkerson, and she's gone through their certification process. So, I'm gonna propose on Monday, we can't vote on it today, that we replace Councilmember Mom with Councilmember Wilkerson for a two-year term that starts on June 26th. We were actually supposed to have a vote until AWC by today for their internal purposes, but I don't think it will matter to wait till Monday. So, I wanted to put that out there. If anyone else feels strongly that they also want to be considered, then you should let us know for Monday. But at this point, I believe Councilmember Mom's gonna nominate Councilmember Wilkerson. I concur in it, and Councilmember Wilkerson has agreed to serve if selected.
Great. Thank you. And thanks for offering to serve, Councilmember Wilkerson. It is extra time, but I know you've been involved already, and your voice has been heard, and the folks across the state have really appreciated your contribution. So, thank you for doing that in advance.
Thank you. I'm excited.
Great. Anything else to put that on the agenda? I think we've got that taken care of with Hannah Lee. Well, we have two items today. We will be out on time because a couple of us have SRTC today. So, first up, we have a presentation and discussion, hopefully mostly we can have some discussion, with Tess Hemmory on federal housing funding strategies. And Tess is on, and welcome, Tess.
Great. Thank you so much for having me. I'm with the National Association of Housing Redevelopment officials, a Washington DC-based group. It's the largest housing organization in the country, and we represent 2,800 of the nation's 3,400 housing authorities. I work really closely with Pam at the Spokane Housing Authority in Cuba in the mayor's office. I'm DC-based, but I grew up in Spokane. I'm an LC grad, so it's really exciting to be here and talk to you guys about federal funding issues for housing. So, just diving into it, so I got a little bit of background about what it is you were hoping to talk about this afternoon. I'm gonna give you just a brief overview of where federal appropriations for HUD has been and a couple of really exciting opportunities that we have this year that are coming up. So, generally speaking, there's just a couple of ways that HUD is funded by the federal government. One is through the annual appropriations process, so it's the bills that they pass each year. HUD is lumped in with transportation, so the transportation HUD bill does provide all that funding for housing. Another way is emergency spending. So, we saw last year the COVID-19 CARES Act. That provided some emergency spending for HUD programs. That's less reliable, and it's really based on the needs following an emergency, whether that's disaster relief or something like the pandemic. And then finally, funding through major legislative items such as an infrastructure package that we may see coming up. Those are rare. Those happen maybe once every decade or so, and so we're really excited about the possibility of infrastructure this year. In the past decade or so, HUD funding has been relatively stable, and I say that, and it's not a good thing, because we really did see some pretty significant budget cuts throughout the 2000s. For example, the Community Development Block Grant Program in 1975 was originally a $2.4 billion program, which adjusted for inflation would be over $12 billion in today's dollars. So, when you look at the appropriation for CDBG last year, $3.4 billion, it's really not keeping up with where the needs are and where the program started. CDBG's high point of funding was in 2003, and we really haven't seen that restored to the 2003 level even now. We also were hurt in 2011 by the Budget Control Act. So, it was this really big package that Congress enacted when we were facing a fiscal cliff with the debt ceiling just about to expire in the nation, being in a position of not having, not being able to meet its debt obligations on top of the government shutdown. It was kind of a big mess in 2011. They put together the Budget Control Act, which was where we got sequestration from, which were pretty arbitrary across-the-board cuts, but it also capped spending for each fiscal year up until 2021. So, the combination of the cuts that happened in the 2000s with the Budget Control Act that really has camped down spending since 2011, it's resulted in HUD having pretty, pretty low funding levels. This is a broad disinvestment across the federal government, too. I know you guys are very familiar with the lack of resources that have been made available to cities for a range of economic development, transportation, community development. It's really hit federally the entire federal budget. So, we do have two main opportunities this year, like I said. There's a big infrastructure push happening right now in Congress, and annual appropriations is beginning right now as well. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about infrastructure. I'll talk about appropriations as well. Infrastructure, as I'm sure you've seen, the president has put out a couple of proposals. One, the American Jobs Act, which is a couple trillion dollars focused on what's referred to as hard infrastructure. Luckily, housing is included in that, so he's provided $213 billion in proposals for housing funding. A lot of that are new initiatives, not necessarily funded through HUD, but we are excited. The Public Housing Capital Fund received $40 billion in that proposal. We do estimate that the backlog of needs to public housing properties across the country exceeds $70 billion. So, $40 billion is a good down payment on the needs of public housing properties. The second proposal that he put forward is more social infrastructure, addresses things like education, childcare, healthcare needs, but not housing, which is a little disappointing not to see something like vouchers included in that conversation. But now that that proposal is out there, it really is up to Congress to decide what they're gonna do. It's a common refrain in DC. The president proposes and Congress disposes. Congress doesn't get to spend any money. So, the president can throw out whatever ideas he wants. Congress doesn't have to listen to it. So, right now, we're in the process of seeing where these negotiations are gonna go. And there's a couple of outstanding questions. One, what's politically possible? Obviously, always a big concern. The size and the scope of the bill. If you're looking at the proposals that Biden has put out there, it's something about $4.3 trillion in proposals versus what we've seen from the Republicans. Senator Capito from West Virginia has put forward a proposal on behalf of Republicans for a $600 billion investment, which includes transportation reauthorization, which wasn't included in Biden's proposal. So, much, much smaller in scope than what the president is putting out there. And I think the process, which process they choose to use for infrastructure is gonna have a really big impact on what we see in that bill. So, size and scope, obviously, the Democrats are going big, Republicans are not. And Biden really is pushing a bipartisan conversation right now. Yesterday, congressional leadership met with President Biden at the White House to discuss arranger issues, and they spent a lot of time on infrastructure trying to come together on some sort of a package. Congressional leadership has handed the baton over to some of their colleagues, so I know that some GOP leaders will be going to the White House today headed by Capito, who put that proposal forward, to talk about infrastructure and see if there's any way that they can come together. But the gaps are pretty big between Democrats and Republicans. So, $4.3 trillion versus $600 billion is big, and there's a lot of disagreements over things like tax reform. The 2017 Tax Reform Act, Biden wants to repeal some of those tax changes to pay for his infrastructure proposal. Obviously, Republicans don't like that, and it's other things like green infrastructure, climate change priorities aren't so much the direction that Republicans would like to go. So, can they bridge those gaps? Can they come together on a bipartisan package? I don't know. But if they can't, there's another option for them to take. So, I'm sure you guys have heard filibuster reform, bust the filibuster. It's been a conversation that's been happening. One of the main reasons why they want to bust the legislative filibuster is because it takes 60 votes in the Senate to pass any sort of legislation through. So, if there is a situation where they can't come together on a bipartisan agreement, they can use a process called Budget Reconciliation that bypasses the filibuster in the Senate and allows them to move forward an infrastructure package with only 50 votes in the Senate. So, depending on if they can get a bipartisan package together, chances are that's gonna be a bit limited in scope. So, you probably won't see the social infrastructure things included. It'll probably be more of a focus on like those shovel-ready projects that we've seen in the past. One big question I have is where does housing fall in that? Because traditionally, housing has not been included in those hard infrastructure conversations. We've done a lot of work in DC to try to get housing as a part of that conversation. Public housing most certainly is critical infrastructure in this country. We need it. We also need resources to develop and preserve other affordable housing in the country. So, we do see that that is hard infrastructure, but that's not universally agreed upon in DC. So, if we're looking at a package that's smaller in scope and size, housing might get left out of that conversation. If we're moving past a bipartisan package, which certainly is possible and at this point seems probable, you've got a situation where they're going to try to move something with only Democratic votes. And to do so, they're gonna have to make sure that they are fulfilling the needs of the Democratic Caucus, ranging from the progressives that really are looking for a very, very big package, once-in-a-generation, life-changing package for most Americans versus some of the more moderate Democrats. They're starting to get a little uneasy about the amount of money that we've been spending as a nation over the past year or so. So, they've gotta meet there in the middle. But I do like the chances of housing getting included in that situation, because that procedure goes through the Financial Services Committee, and Chairwoman Maxine Waters will dictate a lot of that if housing is included in a partisan package. And her proposal, she's got a bill out there. She's introduced it the last couple of Congresses, and it provides a pretty wide range of housing resources. It would wipe out the entire backlog of needed maintenance to the Capital Fund for Public Housing. The National Housing Trust Fund would get $45 billion, CDBG $10 billion, the Home Investment Partnership Program $35 billion. These are huge numbers for programs that usually are under $4 or $3 billion a year. So, the impact in Spokane would just be massive, because I know that you guys get a lot of those resources directly from the federal government. So, that, the possibility of infrastructure is huge. It just really does rest on what is the process gonna be and what is the size and the scope of the package. So, we'll, we'll see exactly how that comes together. Timing of that is pretty critical. Biden wants to see progress made, as he put it, by Memorial Day, but he didn't really define what progress is. So, we'll, we'll see what that means. My understanding is that they're trying to get this done before August. They want it done and dusted off the books and be able to focus on other things like possibly filibuster reform. So, we're really looking at a tight timeline for a lot of possibilities for housing funding that could have a real long-lasting impact in Spokane. So, that's that. The appropriations process this year, shifting gears just a little bit, it really does look different from many years that I've seen in DC. I've been there about 13 years now, and I've been working in housing for basically that amount of time. My entire experience in DC has been under the Budget Control Act, essentially. So, each year, we've been limited in what is possible for housing funding by that cap that they put on overall spending. And we've made some good progress getting a bigger share of that cap, but we're still talking about a cap on overall spending and a lot of needs in the federal government. Now, HUD budget's really tough for appropriators, because housing funding isn't mandatory, but the voucher program and the public housing program essentially are mandatory programs. If appropriators don't fund the voucher program at the full cost of the voucher program, families lose access to their housing. They will have homeless families. And there really is only about 20% of the budget outside of the rental assistance programs that appropriators have to work with. And the Budget Control Act constraining that has really had a huge impact on the HUD budget for the past 10 years. I'm sure you guys have seen that in the CDBG and the home dollars that you've been getting. Those are the programs that really have hurt the most since the Budget Control Act. But it's expired. So, this is the first year we've seen in 10 years where there isn't an arbitrary spending cap. So, it's not entirely clear if Democrats are gonna go big on appropriations or if they're gonna lean in on infrastructure to fill that gap. I don't know that yet. Another thing we don't know is will they try to get rid of the legislative filibuster? Because that would allow them to move spending bills with only 50 votes. That's not a guarantee that, that spending will increase. Senators Manchin, Sinema, there's some pretty moderate senators in the Democratic Party, and so keeping that entire caucus together on highly increased spending bills might be, might be difficult. But there's, there's a lot of possibility there. The whole process is really delayed this year, though. So, I'm, I'm sure you guys are used to short-term spending, bills being in place at the beginning of the fiscal year on October 1st. This year's gonna be no different. So, I just, especially with infrastructure taking up so much floor time, and President Biden's budget proposal, which was legally due on the first Monday in February, still hasn't been released in full yet. So, everybody's really running far behind on the appropriations process on Capitol Hill right now. So, I do anticipate a continuing resolution on October 1st. But since we do have new majorities that we haven't seen operate like that in a while, we have a new president, and we're without the Budget Control Act, there's a lot of possibility there to increase the annual HUD budget this year. And I think it's really important that you guys, just council members, are in contact with your members of Congress to talk about some of the things that you guys need on the ground, how the dollars that you receive are working and what you could do with more dollars. That would, that would make a really, really big difference. So, that was pretty much a rundown of what we're seeing for federal funding going forward. I don't know if you had questions or anything for me?
I'm sure we do. Who wants to go first?
There's a lot of information to take in at once.
Could you just circle back around to the CDBG funding? I kinda lost where you thought those dollars might end up getting out to states and communities.
Where, where they may end up, the funding levels or when the distribution?
The funds, the funding levels, I'm sorry. What were the funding levels?
So, we've seen really small increases to CDBG over the last few years. The last funding, this year 2021, the current fiscal year, it was funded at $3.475 billion, which is an increase. The lowest I saw was $2.5 billion during the Budget Control Act and sequestration. So, they've made some marginal gains, but like I said, the original appropriation for the program when it was created in 1975 was about $2.5 billion, and that's $12 billion in today's dollars. And there's more entitlement communities that are directly getting funding now than there were when the program was created. So, it hasn't kept up with inflation, and it hasn't continued to meet the growing needs of the country. I think you guys probably see that on the ground here. There's not enough resources for things like basic infrastructure programs, investment in housing. The whole country is suffering from an affordable housing shortage, and I think you can directly link that back to the disinvestment in programs like CDBG and Home as well. Going forward, like I said, the HUD budget really is dictated by the cost of the rental assistance programs. So, the only way to grow the CDBG program is to make sure that the transportation HUD appropriations bill gets a bigger slice of the full federal budget than it has been. Without more money in the transportation HUD bill, there's, there's no way to grow those programs.
Who's next? Well, Councilmember Stratt, and I'm thinking about all the CDBG money that used to come into our district and how active our neighborhoods were in putting that on the ground, and we have just seen time and time again that disappear. And the neighborhoods actually shared funds to give it to our neighbors.
Now they're having to share. I'm, I'm a little concerned about vouchers, where we see vouchers going as well. You brought that up, and it caused a little concern here.
Of course. The cost of the voucher program, the appropriators, that's the number one priority, is making sure that the current vouchers are funded. But we haven't seen an expansion of the program in a really long time. We were very fortunate in the American Rescue Plan that was passed back in March. That included $5 billion for emergency vouchers, one-time use vouchers for families that have been struggling as a result of the pandemic. That's the biggest increase to vouchers we've ever seen, and that's, that's not a regular voucher. So, when the family uses that voucher, it disappears. It's not going back into the pool of vouchers. I was really hopeful that there may be some sort of conversation about expanding the voucher program, especially since only one in five families is eligible for assistance receives it. So, there's a huge amount of need out there, and the voucher program could be scaled up to meet that need, but it just, it hasn't been. And from the appropriator's point of view, vouchers are really hard for them because they, they have to keep funding them once they create it. So, appropriators don't love creating new vouchers because it creates a math problem for them, and in the end, that hurts CDBG and Home when you're working under constrained budget situation. So, we, I would like to see that program move to the mandatory spending side so that annual appropriations don't have to continue to grow to meet the needs of the voucher recipients. But that, that's a political fight that I don't think is gonna happen anytime soon.
Councilmember, I would love to see more vouchers in our city. Even if we got more vouchers, which we have, we don't have capacity for our residents to actually use them. So, it's a double frustrating thing around that whole voucher situation and, and lack of housing for people who accept them.
Yeah, exactly. Just because you receive a voucher doesn't mean it's easy to use it. So, there's a lot of communities where housing, rental housing prices are skyrocketing and the stock is non-existent. One thing that's really important to fund in addition to vouchers is the administrative fee that goes to the housing authority. It's the operational costs of the voucher program, and if those fees are increased, it allows housing authorities to do things like landlord outreach and retention and making sure that residents have the support they need to find the units and the landlords that are willing to participate in the program. Right now, that, the admin fee is funded at about 86 cents on the dollar of what it actually costs to operate the voucher program. So, Pam is working magic with not a lot of funding.
One of my questions was, actually, I have a couple of them. But the first thing is what I'm seeing in terms of the homeless support and for housing for homeless is the West is getting hammered, and other cities are actually seeing a drop in their homeless population. So, like Detroit. So, the formulas that were previously used to address the situation, I'm a little concerned that it's maybe not up to date. You know, you've got San Francisco, Seattle, Spokane getting hit. How do we, how do we make that concern known to folks?
And I have to say, I, my members, the narrow members are housing authorities that don't typically administer the homeless dollars. They do partner with their, their homeless partners in their communities, but they aren't necessarily on the ground like that. So, slightly out of my expertise, but that said, I know that there's gonna be a lot of things that need to be shifted and adjusted, especially after the pandemic. That is the kind of things that your members of Congress really should know about, and they can work with you. They, their housing staff is really good at working with HUD and taking a look to see if there's statutory language that needs to be changed on the congressional side. So, I'd definitely make sure that you're raising that with Representative McMorris Rogers and Senators Cantwell and Murray.
Okay. And then my other one is, how would you suggest we build a plan? There's such a wide swing of potential funding, and we need to be ready with our plans, whether it's small, medium, or big. How do we do that? Or what's your recommendation?
Yeah, you know, that's something that I've been trying to argue to lawmakers for years, that not finishing appropriations work on time makes it impossible for cities to plan reasonably for any of this. Like, CDBG and Home dollars aren't awarded until there's a final bill in place. So, you don't know how much you're gonna get until there's a final bill in place, and it just makes the whole process difficult. From an annual appropriations standpoint, I would probably assume, slightly on the conservative side, but what you're receiving now, at least in the immediate future, probably will be about the baseline of what you'll get in the future unless there's some major changes made to the filibuster. So, I, I think you're probably stable at a baseline. And I say that with one caveat that And I say that with one caveat, that the debt ceiling that I mentioned was the cause of the Budget Control Act in 2011. We're coming up on a deadline on that again in July. So it's possible that that may be made into a political fight again, especially considering how much debt we've incurred in the last year. But just given the makeup of Congress, I don't know that that fight would result in something like the Budget Control Act again. So from what I can tell, I think your stable funding is, your HUD funding is probably pretty stable. I would imagine there will be an infrastructure that's, a package that's passed. I don't know if it's going to be a wide scale, because Democrats can only lose two House votes to pass an infrastructure package and none in the Senate if they're going to do a partisan vote. So they're really going to have to bend to some of the members that may have deficit concerns. But that said, I think, I think there's a strong possibility that you could see some additional Homer CDBG dollars coming down the line in the next probably three to six months on top of the annual appropriations.
Any other council questions or discussions? Just one last thing, Tess, before we go. What advice would you give a medium-sized Western city like ours that really hasn't gone in heavy on affordable housing but clearly has the need? What would you suggest?
You've got a lot of peers across the country. I think a lot of communities that have never faced affordable housing crises or shortages in the past are finding themselves all of a sudden without rental stock, and a lot of people are really struggling to find affordable housing. So lean into your peer cities. Everybody's going through the same thing right now. There's one city that I've seen, it's fairly similar to Spokane, it has a very Spokane feel to it, Fort Wayne, Indiana. They've done some really cool things. Their housing authority is really great, and they've done some really cool things with trying to develop affordable housing and utilizing different HUD tools, like the RAD program and different tax financing tools to get their affordable housing off the ground. But it's a really difficult thing to undertake as a community without resources, and the federal government really has starved you of the ability to make major progress and investments in affordable housing. So in addition to leaning into your peer cities, put the pressure on your members of Congress, because they've created this situation, and they should know that they can solve it, too. Money can solve this problem.
Great. Thank you, Tess. It was wonderful. A lot of info packed into a short period of time, but I appreciate your time today and help us understand how that's all interconnected.
Of course. Thanks so much for having me.
You bet. Have a good day. All right. Thank you, everyone. Up next, I saw Tanya Wallace pop in. I see Paul and Josie, and we are going to talk about the 2020 year-end financial report. We got a sneak peek yesterday. A few of us cracked it open and went, oh, my goodness. So we've got some news. Go ahead, Tanya.
Yes, yes. Thank you, councilmembers. Staff has worked really hard. We are closing out the end of the year, and we always think it's a very good idea for us to take a look back and really say, we built a budget plan. How did we do? How did the year go? So our Director of Accounting Services, Michelle Hughes, is prepared to give you an overview of the entire city finances at very high level by fund groups. And then Paul and Josie, our Director of Budget and Management, is going to take a little bit of deeper dive and a slightly different perspective, focused primarily on the general fund. But he does also touch a little bit on some of the other funds. And then Paul is going to close out with what is always the most exciting slide, I think, of how much unappropriated fund balance do we have left in the general fund?
Okay. But we love, we love to have the finance, we love to have the finance show. And so Michelle and Paul and Tanya, what really helps us is when, as you give us this presentation, you ask questions of the council and interact with us. And we want to have more discussion when we have this opportunity to all be together. So if we can have lots of interaction with you, this is a great time to do it. Thank you.
One moment. Are you sure? Can you see the?
We can see it and the preview panel, but again, we have an echo issue, so I don't know if you're in the same room with another computer or need to turn the audio down.
I think we fixed it. No, I can hear it. Can you hear me now? With no echo. Perfect. Okay. Good morning, councilmembers. This is my presentation of the 2020 Annual Review of the City at High Level. This is unaudited information, so we have not handed any of the financial statements over to the auditors as of yet. They are due on May 30th, and then the audit will be under review and should be completed by the end of September. So this slide here shows governmental funds and enterprise funds. It shows the makeup of the city. On the left-hand side is all the governmental funds grouped together, your general fund, special revenue fund, what's included in those, debt service funds, capital project funds. And then the column on the right has your enterprise business-type funds, utilities and internal services. The graph on the right shows percentage of expenditures citywide based by grouping of internal services, general funds, special revenue funds, and so forth. And you can see that the general fund makes up about 22% of the citywide expenditures. The city's operational revenue is 67% of taxes that are from four different type groups. There's property taxes, sales taxes, and other taxes. Overall, 2019 and 2020 taxes collected were $233,000 versus $229,000, and that's an annual decrease of $4 million or a 1.75% decrease in revenues due to the COVID. This slide compares your governmental revenues over expenditures, and you can see a four-year pattern of gradually increasing revenues and expenditures. Revenues increased by 8.83% over 2019, and 2020 expenses increased at 2.3% over 2019. So you can see the growth of expenditures are exceeding the growth of revenues. Sources of your general, I broke it down into sources of your revenues for your general, for governmental funds. There's taxes, license permits, intergovernmental transactions, which is transactions between other governmental units and the cities with hands, direct charges of services, fines and mortgages and miscellaneous. And so you can see that the bulk of the governmental revenue is 67% made up of taxes. The city is spending their revenues for governmental funds. You can see that I did, I broke it out by categories of salaries, benefits, supplies, services, and charges, capital, debt service principal and interest, and everything charges. And then when we switch over to the CAFR, it categorizes them into general government, public safety, transportation, economic environment, social services, and culture and recreation, capital, and principal and interest. And you can see that we spent over $351 million, and that excludes the operating transfers out, which are funds that are transferred to other funds to cover their expenditures. Budget versus actual on all governmental funds. You can see, this is the 2020 actual versus the 2020 adopted budget. This number does include the transfers out, shows the variances from actual budget. I want to point out that with most of the benefits is due to $4.6 million in the police pension fund contra benefits. There's a $3 million revenue, and the $3 million expense that was budgeted, that was not true dollars in revenue, and we are going to be removing that from the 2022 budget. It was kind of in there for 2020 and 2021, or excuse me, and 2021. There's a 1.6 million in excess of actual contributions, also in a variance in medical and dental insurance. Emphasize that we have hiring freeze, but this also includes retro pay for police officers. I just want to interlay that there is, the retro pay is included in all these expenditures for the police officer's guilds, and we also did have a hiring freeze for even 2020. This is the general fund account group, so this is all of the funds that are included in the general fund, and this is the makeup of the entire general fund. This is the actual expenditures for the general fund and the budget for the general fund. These actual expenditures, we did have, I think it's, there's a negative variance in salaries, but this does include the $4.9 million actual payment to the guilds.
Can you stop? I gotta wait for the echo. Hi, councilmembers. I really wanted to emphasize that when we were looking at salaries and wages, and you do see that there is savings of 2.6, but 2020 was a very unusual year because we did have the settlement of the guild contract, which had all of that retro pay that we were seeing in one fell swoop hit that fiscal year of 2020, at the same time that we were responding to COVID, which increased our expenditures. And part of our COVID response to really conserve, because we were uncertain about self-tax primarily and some of our other tax revenues, is we did have a hiring freeze in place. And that hiring freeze did produce quite a bit of personnel savings when you compare the actual to budget, because we didn't anticipate having the revenue to actually cover that. So the variance of 2.6 is, it's really important to understand how that created, and that it was both a lot of compression from hiring freeze, but then retro pay of over $6 million coming in. Otherwise, that variance would look much larger than it did. So just a big kudos to the departments. And I will just say, it was a lot of pressure on support departments and some of our other departments to really continue to provide these services with a reduction in staffing and a reduction in actual people in positions, not a reduction in positions. Okay, we'll continue now. Thank you.
The next slide shows the general fund change in fund balance. You'll see from compared to 2019 and the 2020 difference. The non-spendable, which is contained of inventories and things around the city that cannot be converted to cash easily. Assigned fund balance is designated for encumbrance carryovers through the budget process at the beginning of the year. Adjacent reserves for the purpose of meeting unforeseen extraordinary expenditures. The revenue stabilization is used to mitigate general fund revenue shortfall, and this is not expected to be long-term. And then that leaves the unassigned fund balance. I just have a few things to note, that the fund balance does not include unrealized gains and losses, and the strategic reserve was not funded due to general fund expenditures exceeding the revenues for the year of 2020. So you can see there was an overall reduction in our total net change of fund balance from 2019 to 2020 was $1.1 million. The general fund unappropriated balance, this slide starts with the 1231, basically January versus 2020 balance. This shows the changes that are happening through the year to get us to our current ending balance. There's the current year's revenues that, now it says revenue in excess of expenditures, but it's actually negative, so it's a flop. It's actually exceeded the revenues, reducing it by $783,000. We reduced it due to the increase in the non-spendable held inventory, and then it was reduced again for the reduction in the increase in the year-end encumbrances. And then reduction for interest that was earned on contingency reserve and the participation. And then the change in unrealized gains during 2020, what that is, is because we reduced the total overall by the unrealized gains and losses. Gains and losses of balance in 2019 was higher than it was in 2020, so we recognized some of that revenue, which increased the unappropriated. The prior year's adjustment recorded at the CCC closure. Now, what that was, is when we distributed all the funds from the communications center closure, all the funds got dispersed to stakeholders. The general fund, they've received $2.6 million. And then there was a prior period adjustment for the recording of the guild contract of $6.2 million. That is from 2017 to 2019. Leading you with an unappropriated, unaudited, fund balance of $15.4 million.
Michelle, so stated another way, if we took out the police guild contract, that would have increased?
What would have increased? Yes, or what?
The total balance at the end of the year.
Yes, yes. Yes, if that guild contract had been paid out, the overall balance would have increased, yes.
Thank you.
Can I answer your question? This is the debt fund service group. This is, oh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read my notes. Special revenue fund group, this includes the streets department, the code enforcement, library, pension contributions, parking meters, all the CJ just grants, hotel motel tax, REIT, the CCC, and fire EMS, and the TBD. Charges for services, large variance was related to grants and how, and there was no snow season again this year, kind of fallout league, is all budgeted in the current year, and it is rebudgeted if it's not spent. And then charging services, $23.1 million was attributed to the financial grant, $2.9 was due to streets and snow, and then $1.2 million financial contract for the financial partnership group.
Can we talk about that for a second? That's a shocking number to me when I saw this. So I don't know if you want to give us a little more background. I mean, how we could be that far off and not spend that money in the time of COVID? I could see a lot of people asking us those questions.
I attribute the most of it, I mean, $13 million, $13 million of it is due to capital. So we have budgeted a whole bunch of capital projects, and there are trees and funds to do new things, and construction was halted for a certain period of time. And so we didn't have the opportunity to spend those contracts. And then the big other part of it is in, due to CDBG and the timing of grants and how those grants are granted out. We bring all that money in in June for a two-year period, and it all sits in the budget, and so we spend it. So it's spent in future years. And it all comes in so that they can contract it out and encumber the money, but it doesn't get actually spent until future years go. So the more CDBG money we cut from the end, you're going to see that huge flop.
Okay. So I did have a conversation with council president, for the rest of the council yesterday, about this, asking what projects didn't get done. I recall, construction was supposed to just keep rolling. So I don't know if we completely understand what wasn't done. And I think he did make a request, and will hopefully report back. But council, do you have any other thoughts when you're looking at, you know, 30% of that budget didn't get spent?
Councilor, I'm, I think I'm just concerned that we're just now realizing it wasn't spent, and we're almost halfway through this year, that we should have addressed this earlier. So I just request that we don't be surprised like this going forward. And I am concerned that I know we had significant savings in personnel, but boy, I'm going to be leaning on the administration to fill some of those slots, because our citizens need that work. And I think we're struggling to meet the needs of our citizens in many areas, and that just requires people. areas, and that just requires people to be hired to do the work.
I will echo that.
What other questions?
I would echo that. I mean, absolutely. And the fact that we're sitting here with no, not enough planners in planning, we have code enforcement that's way behind, they, you know, constantly telling us that, you know, that's my concern, is that where we can put people and spend that money, we should, because our employees shouldn't suffer like they have been with too much work and too few people to do it.
I would concur with all that is said, and I'd really like a detailed accounting of what we didn't do, who we didn't hire, not the people exactly, but the positions, because as Councilmember Stratton said, the employees have just been overworked in the last year and a half, and going forward, we need to correct that. I'd really like to see more detail. That's a huge amount of money. And I'm quite frankly shocked, so I don't know what else to say except, please give us more detail.
Okay, councilmembers, we will definitely get you more detail and take a deeper dive on that. One of the things that I've observed is, in part, the way the budget is done compared to the actuals. For example, if we have a $5 million project that we, it may take three years to carry it out, we put the entire $5 million into the budget, even though maybe the only first phase of design of half a million gets completed. So much of this, one of the things that we'll take a look at for you is how much of that budget got carried over into 2021 to continue. And we budget our grants the same way. If we get a two-year grant, you know, like CBBG CV, that is over $3 million, and that's kind of what happened here in 2020, we were getting a lot of federal grant dollars coming in the door in the fall of 2020, that it takes many months to get the RFPs, to get the award process, and get those subrecipients aligned, and then for the subrecipients to actually get paid. So we will take a deeper dive into this. We'll give you some personnel information on the positions and those vacancies. But I do think a lot of this is really just the timing of when the budget is put in versus when the payments actually occur. As we've noted, 2020 is a very unusual year. A lot of additional grant dollars came into the doors. A lot of new services or enhanced services were implemented, but we do need to explain that, and maybe take a look at how we budget and how we can better align the budget with how the actual dollars are flowing out the door, so it doesn't appear like things aren't really getting done when they are, and it's just a misalignment on the timing.
Councilmember Mom, can I add to that real quick? And most importantly, it's the perception.
Yes.
And I think it's unfortunate, if we have the kind of reaction that we just had on these numbers, what that does to employees who see these numbers, employees who think, wait, there was all this money, we could be hiring people to help us out here. So I think for the benefit of everyone, if there's a more, a clearer way to present this, so that there aren't those misunderstandings, we'd be in better shape, because it is about perception. Part of it's about perception, and it just doesn't look great if you're out there watching this, and you're an employee who's been working night and day trying to get stuff done, realize, hey, we could be hiring people. Well, maybe not, right?
Right, right.
But try and work on that.
Thank you, council, for the great feedback. Councilmember Wilkerson?
I just want to ask too about the turnaround time of how fast we get this money out the door to the people that we owe it to, whether it's grant recipients or other contracts. I just heard a little feedback that we could maybe a little speedier in how we get money out the door. So just something to look into.
Yeah, and with CDBG money, we've dealt with this for many years. It is a short turnaround, so we need to monitor and manage and be prepared and work with our partners. We know there's always a time crunch between October and June, but that's part of our job too, is to shepherd those things, make sure it's being spent and get it in there. And so I think, I think everyone's had good feedback here, especially coming out of COVID. I think, I'll speak for myself, I want to make sure we're spending every dollar we possibly can, because this will help us come out of COVID, to secure people's jobs, to get that infrastructure built, especially if heartburn, if we were delaying projects and could have done them, and I can't wait to hear this report, and I guess it's hindsight, but if we still have that money, then we need to double down and get those people working and get those streets fixed and sidewalks fixed and bridges fixed and everything that we need to do to the capacity that we can, because this is the people's money that needs to go to work for them to improve the community. And I know we're being conservative, but now is the time to spend everything we can within reason. We have enough reserves. Clearly, we do, in my opinion. So that's kind of where I'm at. And I know, Michelle, you have more slides, so thank you for stopping on this.
And when councilmember Mom says we have more than enough reserves, that's a statement unto itself.
Thank you for your comments. I would like to make one little clarification too, though, where the grants and the CBBG and the capital outlay, those are actually, most of the capital outlay is grant-related as well, and we have to actually spend the dollars in order to bring the dollars back into the city. So this isn't like it's cash that's available to spend immediately, so.
That's fine, thank you.
Next is the debt service fund group. This is just a group of funds that are gathered together to hold money for debt service. So it's all the geo-bonds, bonds that are collected through property taxes and stuff, and we pay off the debt service for all of our outstanding bonds. Then there's the capital project fund group, and you'll see, again, the huge variance in the capital outlay. That is, again, due to timing and the misalignment of budget to actually spending the contract, or spending, awarding contracts and actually spending in construction. And again, it's money that's not actually, we receive $100 until we spend it, and we request reimbursement for those funds. Enterprise fund group is your water sewer solid waste developer services involved. They are designed to have user fees cover the charges, cover the expenses of the funds. Depreciation, I just want to make a few notes, the depreciation is not typically budgeted for, but you'll see that it's an actual expense, and so there's a large negative $30 million variance for depreciation on all the assets and all the enterprise for funds. In the, the variance for the inter-fund charges to services from other funds, $32.5 million shown, only $419,000 of that was charged to other enterprise funds. So out of the other $32 million, there was an internal service fund revenues offset that expense. So kind of sort of see it twice. All other inter-fund charges and services from internal service funds and governmental funds are in the form of salaries with benefits and supplies as well. Internal service fund group, this is all of the funds that are inside the city that are set up and designed to provide a service for another internal department. There are some, a few large variances here. Again, it shows the depreciation, and the, and the debt service was because we restructured the 2020 debt to reduce our debt service. And then services in is due to, and then some stuff in contractual services is due to risk, workers' comp, employees' benefits not being paid out as much as was budgeted. And the capital, again, is due to the budgeting of all the SIP proceeds, all in one budget, that haven't been spent out. And then in conclusion, the city still can end in 2020 stronger than we had originally anticipated due to COVID. The general fund was able to keep revenue stabilization reserve continuously fully funded, and those key drivers for that were revenues were not impacted as it was anticipated. We managed the cost containment resulting in cost savings and continued conservative operations. And then just one last note, year in 2020, the city maintained a relatively strong financial position during the COVID-19 pandemic. The uncertainty of the long-term financial impact of the pandemic will require the city to continue to review and restructure programs to ensure the delivery of the most needed services in the most efficient and effective manner. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, I guess my question would be what other councilmembers feel about that last paragraph, because I'm hearing some different things. So let's take a look at that last paragraph. So how we decide the delivery of the most needed services in the most efficient and effective manner, that's the big lift for us, right? What's the target? Can we get this money out quickly? I think we're just getting the first $40 million soon. You know, there's just, there's a lot of money coming in that we don't normally get, on top of the fact that we were very conservative last year, and I know it's hard to predict for 2021, but we're halfway through it, and tax receipts are okay. So I think, I think we need to keep having discussions about this, because if we want to get back on our feet quickly, we should be making some decisions. And not waiting, yeah.
So I'm glad we're in a relatively strong financial position, because some of those dollars, we had discussed making the city whole and doing some backfilling, so a lot of that is not required. So really, as council, how then can we invest that in the community? So one time, help stand up some of our nonprofits, some of our other institutions, that we can go in there and do that work and actually move the needle while we got these resources, because we've never had this kind of flexible spending available to us. So I know there's a lot of things that are circulating around our mind of where we can make the impact. I think most have heard that we'll be standing up a community survey, so we'll be seeking input from the citizens of how this money can be spent, but really now, I'm looking personally at community investment.
I am with you on that, and I'm going to turn to councilmember Kinnear, who's our liaison to the plan commission. We have a plan for community investment in our centers. Our targeted investment that we have done at South Perry, at Monroe, at Sprague, were great pilot projects to show how when the city invests, businesses invest, and people want to live and activate those centers. So I know you're having that conversation at the PC level, but we need to put some city dollars behind it, councilmember Kinnear.
I absolutely agree, and we have the Fifth Avenue project as well, that councilmember Wilkerson has been involved in that needs, they need dollars to, they have a plan, let's get the dollars there so that they can actually execute that plan. We also have traffic studies, and we have plans that we have no money for. So we're looking at our six-year street plan, we just got that last night at the plan commission. We're looking at that, and I'm thinking, there are things on that that we could add to, but there's no funding. So let's revisit some of our street infrastructure and sidewalk infrastructure, so that that can be part of what we're looking at when we look at centers and corridors. And the other piece is, we're not looking at parks here.
Right.
Parks really took a hit. And councilmember Mom, you've talked about some of the things, certainly in District Three, that need to be addressed. District One has things need to be addressed. Parks need to be made whole as well, and I don't know about the libraries, I'm not familiar with that, but we need to make sure that every city department is made whole before we move on and spend dollars elsewhere. And I absolutely agree, let's implement our comprehensive plan and use some of this, some of these dollars to do so. So thanks for bringing that up.
So we have a lot of great work to do. I just want to check back, and I don't recall who was part of the team working on the strategic plan, but it seems to me that we need to fire that up, and maybe we could do more of a targeted approach like we did last time. I think it was councilmember Waldorf and Snyder and Stuckert did a quick analysis on where our next targeted areas were going to be. We may need to do that. I think we could do that. We've got a lot of the research, and I heard Fifth come up, but I've heard North Town a lot from a lot of my constituents who are very concerned. I don't know if councilmember Burke's on, but councilmember Cathcart, you've had some conversations there?
I've met with the North Town Mall itself, and they have zero plans for any changes in the immediate future. So there'll have to be some pretty robust conversations to move the needle there.
So there are other businesses that surround North Town, and I don't want to overlook the impact of Holy Family and all the new developments going in up at Franklin Park Mall, which is just a hop, skip, and a jump up from North Town, and the businesses in between on division. I still think the city could look at a targeted investment in that area, which would only help North Town itself. What do you think?
Sure, yeah. I mean, any sort of investment planning that we can do in that area would be welcome and most likely very beneficial.
Yeah, that's the one that comes, you know, to my mind there, unless there's, you know, I, we can reserve that for another discussion. I know that Paul and Josie has more. Is there anything else from you, Michelle here, or Tanya in this section?
No, I have the same. Thank you very much.
Great job. What great news, truly. I mean, coming through COVID, all the hard work, like you said, all the sacrifices that were made, the hiring freeze, it stung hard, yet we're saying, we feel like we can make some decisions, and I think the council's interested in doing that, it sounds like, and supporting the staff, and supporting getting the money out to the community. So thank you so much. Paul, are you the next section?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I am up next. This is going to be a more specific sort of deeper dive, where Michelle talked about the different accounting groups and fund groups. We'll look at some specific budget versus actuals and actuals versus actuals for departments and funds in the city. So we'll take a look at the general fund revenue and other fund revenue, the general fund expenditures, other fund expenditures, and as I mentioned, 2020 budget to actual, and then compare 2019 actual to 2020 actual as well. So first up, general fund revenue, budget to actuals. Ideally, you want to be close to 100% actual to budget. You don't want to over-budget and not be able to do what you accomplished, and you don't want to under-budget and leave resources on the table. So you can see over the last couple of years, we're getting closer to 100, which is sort of our goal. 2020, again, the outlier, 95% of budget, actuals to budget on the general fund revenue side. So those numbers translated, our final budget revenue was about $215.4 million on the general fund side. That includes $8 million added for cares across all the programs that went through the general fund, and there was many more that went through some of those special revenue funds that Michelle's already referenced. So our final actual revenue, the dollars we brought in, was about $204 million. And as Michelle mentioned, there's some accounting, accounting steps and transactions that go into the background. So if you look in our system, there's about $209.7 million. 5.3 of that was unrealized gain. So I took that out, so you see the dollars, we actually brought in about $204 million to a $215 million budget. This table shows you by different revenue types within the general fund. Again, budget to actual is how well we did projecting and how much we actually brought in. Property taxes, they're pretty steady, so usually around 100% of your budget received. The local retail sales and use tax, we came in about 95%, so we were almost $2.5 million short just in the general fund from what we had budgeted. And then you can see the two utility types, taxes, inter-fund and private utilities, again, pretty close, but you could see there was some impact likely due to the COVID-19 pandemic from the Again, pretty close, but you could see there was some impact likely due to the COVID-19 pandemic from the, from 2020. Inter fund engineering is another revenue source for the general fund. And as Michelle mentioned, once, when projects aren't happening, you're typically going to see a dip in your engineering revenue that comes to the general fund group that does that work. So they were about 92% budget to actuals. The other areas on here, investment is interest and dividends. It turns out it's really tough to predict interest rates during a once, once in a hundred year pandemic. So we only received about 55% of the, the revenue that we were budgeting for that type code, that revenue type. And then again, revenue, business registrations and the emissions tax, another one that was directly impacted from the shutdown last year. This table breaks it out into the other funds that you see throughout the city, and some of these were grouped into different areas that Michelle showed. But these are the specific funds or departments. Parks and Recreation, as, as I heard on the call already, severely impacted. They, they brought in about 72%, 73% of the revenue that they were anticipating for 2020. Library did pretty well. We'll walk through all these. I'll just highlight a couple other ones. Traffic calming obviously was impacted by the shutdown, as was Hotel Motel Tax Fund, which saw about 45% of what they were anticipating for last year. Fire EMS fund pretty much received all the revenue that they were budgeted. I think they had a couple of grants that were booked, but the revenue wasn't received yet. So that might be the difference between their actuals and budget for that, for that one. And you can see sort of the other utility funds and enterprise funds on there. And the very bottom, arterial streets, which is our street capital. Again, as, as Michelle mentioned, we, we budget the full project when we, when it's, when it's ready. But we may not get the actuals, the actual dollars or the reimbursements until the projects happen. So that's, I think, explains the large variance for the street capital projects. We'll switch over to the expenditure side. So general fund expenditures, again, you want to be close to 100%. You don't want to over allocate. You don't want to under allocate. And you can see the last couple of years, we were, we're doing a pretty good job spending the money, I guess, that we were appropriated. And then 2020, a mixture of the hiring, hiring slowdown, the hiring freeze, and also tighter expenditure controls, I think helped us manage to only spend 94% of our, our general fund budget.
So Paul and, and Tanya, I think you're still on, and/or Michelle.
Yep.
Where is our range? I mean, should we be between 98 to 102? 94 seems pretty, 92% in 2019 and, and 94 in 20, does seem a little shallow to me, a little too low.
Oh, I can, watching the echo here. Councilmembers, in my experience, when it's, aside from anomalies happening throughout the fiscal year, on the expenditures, expenditure side, you really don't want to be more than 100, over 100%. You have set a limit by ordinance of what can be spent. So exceeding that is, is, is really not what we're trying to do in any way. But having a 1% to 3% savings is, is typical of what you'd see. And it's, it's usually around just the activity that happens throughout the year. People come and go, so staffing fluctuates here and there. But usually 1% to 3% is very reasonable and very good to assume. Clearly, 2020, you thought, you're seeing the impact of, of what COVID, and we intentionally managed to spend less because we were not expecting to receive the revenues.
And so this brings.
I think in 2019, 2018, you're seeing a lot of the impact of probably the guild not having their pay, but it was budgeted. So in the personnel costs, you're seeing all of that budget in there, but you're not seeing the actual because it was, it was unsettled. So that's probably one of the big reasons for 2018 and 2019. And that would be expected, that the longer those contractual obligations go out unsettled, we should start seeing a percentage drop, just exactly what you're seeing here.
That is great to have that benchmarking council. I'm just thinking maybe on an upcoming finance discussion, Councilmember Wilkerson for that committee is maybe we could do a check in, kind of what we were just mentioning. How close are we on the actuals, on expenditures, and see if we're getting close to that 97, 98, 99? And if we're under again, then we can have a conversation.
This is Paul again. Yeah. And I, I think we have a, a way to incorporate that into our, our monthly finance and administration committee meetings as well, to get you that information. Okay, so I'll move on to a little more of the overview for budget versus actuals. The final expenditure budget was about $220 million. And again, this included about $8 million in the cares, and our final actual expenditures was about $206 million. And for the purposes of, of this report, I did exclude that accounting prior period adjustment of the retro payments. The way that they post and the way they hit our system, I think it would, we know, we knew it happened in the past, but it's going to hit the system in 2020 and 2021. So just to control for it, I just took it out at this point. So again, 94% of final budget, budget versus actuals for 2020 in the general fund. And then I took a snapshot of the five departments that had the lowest percentage of budget spent, and then the five departments in the general fund that have the highest budget versus actual. And then just in case anybody was interested, Mayor's Office and Council were both around 80% of budget to actual. But you can see on that top part of the table, it's going to be those smaller departments that had vacancies, which is really the driver for most of the expenditures in the general fund. It's, it's going to be your personnel costs. So finance, we had some vacancies last year, Neighborhood Housing Community Services Division, Community Economic Development Division, Planning Service and Neighborhood Services. Again, all the places that you know that there are vacancies are going to show up on here. And then the five that had the highest percentage of budget spent would be Police, Public Affairs, Communications, Probation Services, City Clerk, and then Public Defender. So looking at budget versus actuals for the other funds on the expenditure side, and again, just a sampling of different departments or different funds. So you could see traffic calming, again, since they were impacted by the pandemic and saw a drop in the revenue. Construction projects also didn't really move forward last year. So they didn't spend as much as the budget, but I think we knew from conversations that that was going to happen and the budget necessarily wasn't there last year with the, the decrease in revenue. Again, arterial streets, street capitals on there, the 83, 83 million dollars, which again would be the projects, and about $29 million in actuals, which would be dollars out the door that were likely reimbursed from either the state or DOT, state DOT for, for some projects. Parks and Recreation, again, another one severely impacted their budget of about $27 million on the expenditure side, and only $16 million because they just didn't have the revenue or the programs to, to support it for 2020. And you can see the other ones on there. The ones in red at the bottom are the ones that were slightly above their, their limits due to a variety of factors. Some of them were employee payouts that happened late in the year. So it bumped them up above what they were expecting, or some unanticipated overtime costs that would hit their budget lines that weren't accounted for throughout the year. So looking at 2020 versus 29, 2019 actuals to actuals, the adjusted general fund revenues, again, 2020 was about $204 million, 2019, $202 million. And again, what I, when I use the term adjusted revenues, I'm talking about taking out the impact of those unanticipated gains or losses that Michelle referenced earlier too. So we actually had about a 1.2% increase in general fund revenues from 19 to 20. On the expenditure side, about a 4% increase, 205, 206 million dollars to about $199 million. And I think part of that is going to be your personnel costs, personnel benefits increase from 19 to 20, including your retirement benefits. Again, now we're into the comparing 2020 versus 2019 actuals in the general fund side for the revenue types. Property taxes, again, pretty steady. That was a 2% increase. You can see the changes throughout some of the other ones. The inter fund sales and service charges, that would be your, your engineering revenue, which saw a decrease again due to projects not happening. We did want to point out how successful we were in federal grants indirect increasing, over 240,000%. So I think if we just keep focusing on that, we'll, we'll probably be okay. We just need a couple, a couple dozen million dollars from, from the feds. Comparing 19 to 20 on the expenditure side, this is by general fund expense type. These are the categories that Michelle also went over. And you can see the different changes throughout. Salaries and wages, again, not much of, not much of an increase from one year to the next, but it is one of the highest categories. The other, the largest category is actually the transfers out that Michelle also referenced. Those are the dollars that go from the general fund to support other departments such as Fire EMS, Parks and Recreation, Library, all those transfers flow through the general fund in this transfer type. So you can see there's actually slight increase in that from 19 to 20. And then looking at the, the rest of the, the city's business, on other funds besides the general fund, again, 19 to 20 actuals to actuals, about 15% increase in overall other fund revenue, which includes those enterprise funds, our city utilities, different grants, like, and then on the expenditure side, about a 13.4% decrease. And this is, this is a, due to the number of, so again, the actuals to actuals. So these are the number of projects that completed in 2020, or sorry, 2019, that weren't there in 2019 to, to occur. So it's, we, we expected that to go down because there were less projects happening, which was part of the plan. 19 to 20 other fund revenue, again, a selection of different funds throughout the city besides the general fund. Parks and Rec, again, leads the way with a 22% decrease from their actuals from 19 to 20. So that would be, I think, the area that might be targeted for the rescue plan dollars when you, when you compare 19 to 20. And you can see the other funds too, Hotel Motel Tax, again, Traffic Calming, again, Parking Meter, again. These are all the, the ones that were impacted in, in 2020 budget to actuals as well. And on the expenditure side, again, just again, a different selection, most of them are the same, but you could see the changes between their expenditures, 19 to 20. And then I will wrap up with the, I don't want to end on a down note, but I didn't want to take away from the excitement that we, we felt when we, we thought we had $15.5 million. So there were some additional changes that needed to happen when you translate from the accounting side to the budget side. So 15.5 would be the starting point for the unassigned fund balance. That would be the, the dollars available. The 2021 budget assumed using some of those unassigned dollars to help balance. That was about a million dollars there, $934,000. Michelle included in her slide, the prior period adjustment for the CCC settlement. That was that $2.7 million. We assumed it in the budget, and it was included in the budget to help balance the general fund. However, accounting has already made that transaction as a prior period adjustment in 2020. So those dollars would also come out of our 2021 available fund balance. And then we have a placeholder in there. We know there are some unsettled labor agreements. So we just have a placeholder of a million dollars, not assuming any percentages or agreements happening. But we just wanted to, to keep that in the front of people's minds as well. So those adjustments then take your available for allocation down from that 15.5 to a little under $11 million, about $10.8 million. And we just wanted to point out that the best practice that we, we've heard on this call already, so that's good to hear, allocate towards one-time projects or provide bridge or seed funding for critical needs and initiatives. So that is all the material I have. We're happy to take any other questions. We're all still here on the line.
So yes, council, anybody wants to go, just go for it. I can't see everybody.
You think someone would have noticed?
Thank you, Councilmember Mum. I just think with this type of resources, one of my fellow council members is already asking me about $50,000 to invest in our community. So I think just opportunity, but I'm excited.
I do have a question. Today, the governor is likely signing, if he hasn't already, 1155, which, what does that look like as far as impacting our budget? Would we be receiving any of those funds from the 911 tax, and had we anticipated that?
Thank you, Councilmember Mum. I do think that there is a little bit of work that needs to occur before that. And, and I, I don't want to say something incorrectly, but I do believe that an ILA is going to be required otherwise as a first step or consideration in that. But there will be many moving parts regarding 1155 and other impacts to the city that we will be reviewing and then bringing items forward or information forward to city council for policy decisions. So we are also watching to see the signing of that and anticipating the, the next steps. But right now, the budget and the finance does not include any impact of 1155 at this time. We can't hear you, Councilmember Mum.
I said, there you go, council. That's the high level, and now we're going to turn around and talk about 2022. Anything else for the team today? All right. Thanks, everyone. We got out on time. Appreciate all your hard work, Paul, Michelle, Tanya, and I appreciate all the staff who are here today. We will see you, and council will be back next Monday at 1:15.